FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer.
Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. Welcome to Gun Sports Radio, all about shooting, hunting, self-defense, and more. Now, here are the hosts of Gun Sports Radio, Dave Stahl and Lance Belkey.
All right, folks, hey, this is Dave Stahl, he's Lance Belkey, and this is Gun Sports Radio, right here on The Answer, 96.1 North County, AM 1170 San Diego, The Answer. This segment is brought to you by the Gun Range San Diego, what a phenomenal group they are. Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, 10 to 10, seven days a week. Just go to gunrangessanddiego.com, you can find out everything they're doing, and you will be totally thrilled with the service and everything that you get right there at Gun Range San Diego. So, how you doing, bud?
I'm doing great, man, and you know, we've got that 96.1, it's working, I tried it, have you tried it yet?
Michelle did, because she was coming from Irvine, she got to Encinitas, and as soon as it got to Encinitas, it got a little shaky, she flipped 1170, perfect.
Yeah, it got strong again, yeah, I use it right out here, it worked great.
Yeah, well, you got it out here?
I got it right here, right on the front.
Oh, must be her crappy press car. Well, it's the only thing I can think of, because she was, it was breaking up when she was...
Speaking of press cars, what are you driving out there, Dave?
It's not purple, but it is a Hellcat.
It is a Hellcat.
And it's a wide-body Hellcat.
I saw that, those...
They look good.
They're wide, yeah, well, it's either that or I had a Corvette Stingray.
Yeah.
And I keep falling into the Corvette, I don't have to fall into the Hellcat.
Yeah, the Stingray looked good too, but isn't that Hellcat amazing?
I know, now this, did you happen to see it?
I didn't see it, but I still want to know where the black Corvette that you unearthed the other day is.
Oh, I'm surprised you brought that up, tomorrow is going to be appraisal day. It's in Lakeside, well, we're driving it to Lakeside, and then we're going to appraise it, and then once we get it appraised and get the go-ahead, and folks, for you that don't follow me on Facebook, it's a 1959 black Corvette with 55,000 original miles.
Wow.
That's been sitting in a one-car garage since 1985.
That black plate on it, so is that original black plate, or is that a newer one?
That's the original black plate.
Yeah, that's cool.
And the guy took cotter pins, and he ran them in from the back and just spread them open, so the plate stayed.
Why wouldn't you? Come on, you know it's a Corvette. Hey, before we get going, let's introduce it.
Yeah, wouldn't it be doing cars the whole time?
Wouldn't it be doing cars? Let's talk, we've got Christine Aliso, she's a city councilperson with La Mesa down, she's down with us on the show today, and she's also on the board of the San Diego County Gun Owners, so welcome Christina.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Well, we're happy you're here.
So, what got you into supporting San Diego County Gun Owners?
That's easy, I think as an American citizen, and as a woman, you need to have the right, you have to protect your right to bear arms.
Yes.
And there's so much misinformation out there about guns, about who uses them, about what types of guns, people think that, you know, Tommy guns from 1934 are still legal, and I thought, what a better way to educate people than to join an organization that protects your Second Amendment rights and educates people about guns. And I have guns, and I like to shoot, and it's very important to me.
Well, you'll love this, we had Juan in here from Trident Gunsmithing, I don't know if you've been to Trident lately, but if you ever get a chance to, and a lady was really upset that, you know, he had a gun, you know, gunsmithing store.
What?
Well, she did not, she's, and then Juan asked her, he says, "So, what is it about guns you don't like?"
Right.
"Well, they kill people, they kill kids."
Oh, yeah.
And he goes, "Okay, I can appreciate your opinion, but how about, what have you taught your children about guns?" "Oh, absolutely nothing." Well, the problem there is, if a kid walks in, and let's face it, all us little kids are very inquisitive.
Yep.
You know, Joe Hollywood, Holyfield's a prime example.
He still is.
Trust me, if it's got a lid on it, he's going to open it up to see what's in there. So, kids, and so Juan says, "You got to at least teach your kids how to handle a gun, if they see it in a room, teach them not to touch it," or if they, you know, and she actually said, "You know, I never even thought of it that way." So, if you're totally ignorant to the gun industry, this is how people get hurt. Ignorance kills, more than guns kill.
And along with ignorance, just basic facts about guns, people think, the majority of the public seems to think that AR stands for Assault Rifle.
Right, which it does not.
Which it does not, and they also think that it's an automatic. They don't understand that you have to touch, you have to pull the trigger every time. It's not just reeling it off, like a military-grade, a military weapon. And so, I think it's super important for people who are supporters of the Second Amendment and own guns to get out there and educate, because so much of regulation is based on fear not, and I'd much rather, on almost anything, educate, don't regulate.
Yeah, and then Jimmy Kimmel, like, you know, like, I talked about this before, he gets on and says, "How come everybody in America could have a fully-automatic M16?" So, you know, and then we have to get behind that argument.
And then, yeah, we have to defend it.
It's just terrible.
Well, the answer is, you can't, but he's already, he's already said it, so, you know, people believe him because he's on TV for some reason.
Well, I've never seen a group of people that are so upset with a style of a weapon. Now, if an AR was just butt-ugly, and a long pole with a barrel, and a ugly stock, nobody would probably say a word.
I was just telling Christine that, so I just bought this Ruger, Christine has a Ruger that she's going to tell us about, but I just bought this Ruger rifle, PC9, and it's got a mechanism, it's like an AR-15. I mean, but it shoots a 9mm, but it's the same deal, it's got the, it doesn't have the evil grip on it. But other than that, you know, it takes these Glock magazines and pew, 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 and away you go, so, you know, that's exactly it.
Well, no offense, since you are in government, but those people don't have a clue when they're making a rule.
Well, and San Diego County Gun Owners, that's part of what we, on the board, we want to do, Christine's on the board, and we talk about, there's 18 city council districts in San Diego County, about, you know, outreach to them and their staff members, inviting them down and, you know, to go shooting with the center range.
But how many of them will go? See, that's the problem, you know, they don't, it's almost like they don't want to know for fear that it's going to change their attitude.
I think they will, because Christine, I don't know if you had this happen to you yet, but, you know, we talked about before, like, the Brady people?
Yeah.
You know, showing up, so, I mean, the Brady people are showing up all the time and pestering, you know, council members from all the different ones, and, you know, that's something I know that San Diego County Gun Owners would like to do. We're spread a little thin right now, you know, but that's something that...
Yes, and when I don't, when people want to talk to me about guns and gun control, I don't dismiss them as being, "You're anti-Second Amendment, I'm not going to talk to you." I view it as an opportunity to educate them.
Mm-hmm.
And they say, "Well, how could you manage to have guns in the house with your daughter?" My daughter's 19 now, and, but when she was little, of course, I had guns, I said, "It's easy, it's common sense. They are locked up."
Hmm.
When you have a three-year-old, you don't leave your guns out.
You don't leave anything out with a three-year-old.
You don't leave anything out, and you, and if you have your kids and their friends over, guess what? The kids don't have access, they don't even know about it.
Yeah, they don't even know about it.
And that's safety, and they go, "Well, I would never trust my daughter if I had a gun in the house." I'm like, "Well, you must be doing a poor job of parenting."
Yeah, because you haven't parented, yeah, you haven't parented your children, I mean, and we had this conversation last week, you know, I mean, you know, we, I started out with a BB gun, got trained by my grandfather how to handle it, safety.
How many windows did you break, Dave?
Well, I was hoping you weren't, I was hoping you weren't going to...
Well, you got to bring that up.
Yeah, why you got to bring that up? Why you got to bring up the windows? And why do you have to bring up, me and my buddy thought it'd be fun to shoot at each other like we were at a actual fireshot, but the best part was, his mother came out and screamed at him, he put about four pellets into her. So, we didn't get to play very long for after that little episode.
Does Tim need to beep that out?
Yeah, he'll beep that, yeah, Tim's over here, his chair's gone, there's smoke coming out of the booth. But no, I mean, it's all about training, and having your parents tell you, you know, "This is a very dangerous, you know, weapon, you just can't go play with it."
Sure.
You know, so just stay away from it.
Yeah.
Well, it comes down to, people say something, "Oh, why do you need that? This is, you know, La Mesa, it's not the DMZ." Well, you know, you're yelling at me about owning guns, and you're saying I don't need them because I live in La Mesa, which is a safe place, yet the reason this is on your radar is it occurred in a church, or a school, or a movie theater, or an open-air market, which isn't the DMZ either.
Yeah.
You know, I don't get your logic, you have a right to defend yourself, your property, it's ironclad.
Yeah, it's your, well, and then you have, and then, and you know, it's just, it's just crazy, and then they, you know, they turn around, and what's the latest? "Oh, now they're trying to give guns to every schoolteacher in America, oh my God, that's terrible."
Just like we did the airline pilots.
Forcing them to carry a gun.
Yeah.
Give me a break.
I know.
I know. Hey, let's take a quick break, but before we do that, we want to talk about Trident Gunsmithing. Boy, I tell you what, if you've never been to Trident Gunsmithing, you missed out. www.tridengunsmithing.com, Dan is the man, he is a wizard when it comes to gunsmithing, so check these guys out, tridengunsmithing.com, tell them you heard it right here on KCQ AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, hey, welcome back, this is Gun Sports Radio, right here on The Answer, 96.1 in North County, AM 1170 in San Diego, truly The Answer. This segment is brought to you by the good folks at Gatski Dillon and Balance LLP, your one-stop shop for legal advice and help if you get yourself involved in a firearms dispute of any kind. Go to ca-firearmslaw.com, ca-firearmslaw.com, and John will be more than happy to chat with you. If you need a phone number, 760-431-9501. Mr. Dillon, how are you today?
I'm good, how are you, gentlemen?
Oh, we're doing good, we've only been on air, what, for two years now? So, let's see if you, let's see if you have any good news this time.
Oh, I rarely do, but I'll interject some good news, you know, we have the upland bird season that has started, so we can all celebrate that, you know, go get your upland birds, and good luck to all those hunters out there. But with that season coming in, and, you know, deer season opening up, I just want to make the reminder, you know, that California has a non-led ammunition law when it comes to hunting ammunition, so make sure you buy the right type of ammunition. The Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife Wardens, they are pretty strict when it comes to following the rules, so make sure you have the right ammunition, make sure you have the right licenses and the right tags with you at all times, and you follow all of the hunting laws and regulations.
That's a really good point, because I, I mean, I'm sure that's the first thing they look at is, do they have lead ammo?
Right, and where do you, and where do you find all...
They can search you and check all, to make sure you're compliant, make sure that you're not going over the limits when it comes to birds, make sure you're shooting the right species, checking your ammunition that you're using, checking your license, all that, so that's all really important.
Hey, John, how do people actually find these rules and regulations? I mean, I seem to think a lot of this is word of mouth.
Well, yeah, but when you get your hunting license in California, you go to a class, and all the information is in there, you know, I know Trident Gunsmithing is one of the places they offer hunting classes, and the hunters, it's hunters' education classes, and they're great sources of information there. There's a lot of, I do have to say, you know, there are a lot of booklets and pamphlets you can get from Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, that, you know, give you little reminders of everything that you need to know, but just make sure you're doing it, you're getting the right regulations for whatever hunting you're doing, because there's little, you know, intricacies for each type of hunt that you're going to do, and certain requirements that you're going to follow. So, that's just in general, since we're in that season that's coming up, there's, there's no, there's no fun if your hunt gets spoiled because you forgot to follow one of the laws, and they will take whatever game you get, and you'll get not only fined, but you can get misdemeanors and even felonies, depending on what you did wrong. So, you know, it's important to have fun hunting, but also follow the rules.
Yeah, it's a great reminder.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, so, that was, the good news is that, you know, it's hunting season. The bad news is that we have multiple bills that are being sent to the governor's desk in California, and these are gun control bills, so just a quick overview of the bills that are now sent, have been sent to the governor's desk to be signed, so the governor can either sign them into law or veto them. We have AB 2103, which places more requirements on concealed licenses to conceal carry, and mandates certain class period of time, timelines for classes, minimum amount of the time and live fire that you have to take. We have AB 2888, which is the expansion of the gun violence restraining orders. This kind of expansion of this would allow coworkers, school employees, and alike to be able to apply for a gun violence restraining order, so, you know, if you've got a coworker that doesn't like guns, and you happen to be talking about your latest gun purchase to your buddy at work, they may have issue that, they may, you know, think that you're a threat, and call in the police, "Are you, you know, threatening people by talking about firearms in the workplace?" And I'll tell you, this is a, you know, catastrophic law that's already in place, and this expansion's even worse. I'll tell you, in San Diego, these are already abused, and along the same lines, the 5150 mental health hold is another just god-awful piece of law that is abused every single day, and it's so easy to put someone under these restrictions, have their Second Amendment rights stripped away from them based off of just a phone call accusation. And it's then on you to, you know, defend yourself and prove that you're not a danger to anyone from that point onward, and it's dangerous, and, you know, people like to say, "Oh, no, this is a good thing, you know, everything that, you know, we're going to keep guns away from violent people." There are no standards in this, and the standards that are in place are, you know, they're essentially nonexistent, and it comes down to being, you know, in a courtroom at a hearing. The judges do not uphold these standards in any way.
John, is anybody challenging that, California Rifle and Pistol Association, or anybody?
With a current lawsuit?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, with the gun violence restraining orders, it was originally challenged when it was put in place, but, you know, it came from the domestic violence restraining orders, and so there wasn't a constitutional ground against it, according to, R9 took it.
Got it, hey, real quick, let's go back to 2103. And so, what, they're adding like four more hours to the concealed carry, you know?
Yeah, they're mandating a minimum amount of hours, so it's at least eight hours, but not to exceed 16 hours.
Yeah, was that just politically motivated by our former city councilperson in San Diego?
It's a widely-known fact that concealed carriers are like the lowest crime-comitting population in the country. Concealed carry license holders commit less crime than police officers. So, we have no issue with, you know, having, not having enough, you know, requirements for CCW holders, or certifications for CCW holders, it's just not a problem, and this is a law just to make people feel good and to put more, have more hoops for everyone to jump through.
And a lot of people in San Diego have been applying for CCWs, so when does this law take effect?
You know, if the governor signs it, it's all up to the pen of the governor on that. The other big one is SB 1100, which is the age restriction. This would make it to where, if you were a legal adult, 18 and over, so 18, 19, 20 years old, you would not be able to purchase a firearm in California. They would literally strip the Second Amendment rights from legal adults without any sort of due process, and it's all because of some, you know, made-up idea that, you know, it's because people are too young, that, you know, these shootings are occurring, and it's all about the age. You know, if you're an adult, you have all the rights of an adult, and there's just no exception to that.
And that one's on the governor's desk?
Yeah, that's, you know, he can sign that, he signs it in the law, and, you know, the only exceptions are, you know, if you're a peace officer or you're in the military, but the average, you know, 18, 19, 20-year-old, you know, even if you have your own job, you're living on your own, you're self-sufficient, you're a single mom with kids, and you want to be able to protect you and your kids from, you know, your crazy ex, you won't be, you won't have that right. California decided that you're not safe enough, just because of your age. So, it's, it's a scary law that they're even trying to do that. This is a complete unconstitutional ban on the Second Amendment for adults, it really is.
I don't know how they could do that.
But, John, don't they do that just to see what they can get away with?
Well, yeah, there have been many of our legislators in California who've fully admitted that, "Hey, it's not our job to, you know, determine if a law that we write up is constitutional. We have our lawyers review it, and, you know, let's face it, there's no actual review there."
Right.
They just sign and pass their laws, and it's up to the courts to decide whether or not it's constitutional, and they, and when it comes to guns, they don't care at all, it's just not even a consideration.
Can we clarify real quick, so for 1100, that's both rifle and pistol for people?
Yes, firearms, all firearms.
All firearms.
Unless you get a hunting license, you can, I believe, get a long gun, but again, hunting license classes, they're not every day, you know, when I had to do, I had to wait over a month and a half to get my class, and I took the class, and I was able to get the license. So, if you're someone who has, you know, death threats from, you know, a crazy ex, and, you know, it happens, people call my office with these problems, they have restraining orders, they've already called the police, but it's just not helping, if you're in that situation where you, or life-or-death situation, you feel like you need to defend yourself, or you're going to need to defend yourself, even in your own home, you got to then apply for a class for hunting, which has nothing to do with self-defense. You have to wait a month to take that class, and then after you get that, then you have to go to the gun store and try to purchase your firearm, wait another 10 days, because there's the 10-day cooling-off period in California. She can, you know, delay you over two months, and when someone's in trouble, and, you know, someone's after you, someone wants to hurt you, you know, two months is a lifetime, and a lot of bad stuff can happen.
Just tell them to hold off, "I need two months."
Yeah, just say, "Wait two months."
Then you can come try and kick my butt.
So, it truly is astounding how they just have thrown any of these considerations out the window with this law. I mean, it is truly an unconstitutional ban, and there's no other way to put it.
Wow, well, thank you for all this uplifting news, hope you're having a wonderful day.
Well, it's really great for the listeners, because other than that, they're poking around on the internet and getting wrong information, so...
Well, or better yet, finding out the hard way.
Yeah.
No, so stay, stay positive, my man, I appreciate it. Gatski Dillon Balance LLP, ca-firearmslaw.com, check these guys out. And oh, by the way, do you or any of your family keep a firearm, chaser, or other weapons? Or do you, or have you, or plan on getting a CCW? What happens if you get involved in a situation? Who are you going to go to for help? Hey, guess what, $10 a month, Firearms Legal Protection, we've all got it, we're totally protected. That's you and your family, $10 a month, firearmslegal.com, firearmslegal.com. And by the way, are you frustrated by the new California law for ARs, looking for a cost-effective way to take care of that problem? CaliKey, easy converted, AR to be California compliant in two minutes, Lance does it in one. Keep your entire collection intact at a price you can afford. Check out the new CaliKey and Future Proof, that's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y, K-A-L-I-K-E-Y.com. Check these boys out. Hey, we're going to take a small break, when we come back, a lot more Gun Sports Radio. All right, folks, welcome back, this is The Answer, 96.1 FM in North County, AM 1170 in San Diego, intelligent conservative talk radio. Don't forget, FM 96 in the North County, AM 1170 in San Diego, we are The Answer. All right, hey, this, talk about a great gunsmith, Trident Gunsmithing, go to 858-577-0576, that's www.tridengunsmithing.com, your connection for gun repairs, upgrading, and a whole lot more. These guys are phenomenal, make sure you check them out.
And by the way, on Trident, they're going to start to do CER coating.
Ooh, he didn't tell me that.
And they also can install the CaliKey, if you can't do it in two minutes. You should be able to do the CaliKey with the little video, but if you just want to have the guys at Trident, they sell them there too.
You did it in one minute.
Just wang, wang, buy and go, it's fast.
Hey, this segment is brought to you by Gun Range San Diego, the Nordstroms of gun ranges, just not the price. 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, 10 to 10, seven days a week, only a couple of holidays, they're not there, but boy, if you want to go out and have some fun with your friends, family, coworkers, go to gunrangessanddiego.com, set up an appointment, I mean, they've even taken people in before the place even opens up. I think you have to belong to Gun Range San Diego for that, but I'm not 100% sure. But I got an expert sitting right here that can tell me all about it, Joe Hollywood, Holyfield, how you doing, Buzky?
Doing good, just hanging out and enjoying my time here on the Gun Sports Radio, and you can get some private one-on-one stuff over there at Gun Range San Diego, and all it takes is a phone call, and we'll make it happen, whether you're a member or not, we'll work around your, around your schedule, around, you know, whatever makes it more convenient for you. So, yeah, that's anytime, but our distinguished guest, the Honorable Mrs. Aliso, brought up earlier that people believe that the AR, when you say AR-15, stands for Automatic Rifle, or Assault Rifle.
Assault Rifle, yeah.
Either one, you know, I've even heard people say that for the AK-47, that they think that means an automatic kill rifle, and that it shoots 47 rounds when you pull the trigger, and that's why it's called the AK-47.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
When in fact, it is...
Lance will buy one, awesome.
Yeah, when in fact, it is the, the Automatic Kalashnikov Rifle, named after Ivan Kalashnikov, who designed the rifle, yeah, now, it's his 47th patent, so...
Kind of like WD-40.
There you go, AK-47, but the AR started off, believe it or not, back in the 50s, there was this former Marine, go figure, named Eugene Stoner, and he worked for the Fairchild Aircraft Corporation. And the Fairchild Aircraft Corporation had a subsidiary business called Armalite. Well, he worked for Armalite, so he started developing, you know, they were trying, they were trying to beat the rush before the M14 come out, but they didn't, and, but they started working on this rifle, and they wanted to do it in 308, so believe it or not, the AR-10, the 308 version, was developed before the 223 version, believe it or not.
Really?
Yeah, so they were working on it, and when they finally, everything was said and done, they, they were finished with the product, it was called the AR-15, that was it, or the AR-16, actually, because it had a 16-inch barrel, so it was an AR, started off with the AR-10, there's the AR-16.
And what did their AR stand for?
Armalite Rifle Company.
Pay attention, don't they?
Armalite Rifle Company, so that's how the original AR got started. And when it was first developed, it didn't have a shell deflector, it didn't have a forward assist, it didn't have a dust cover over the chamber, and believe it or not, the Air Force, because they had the most money, as always, they were the first ones to employ that weapon in a combat environment, because if you know your American history a little bit, you know, when we went, when we went to Vietnam, it was as advisors.
Right.
For the French, and it was the Air Force who was doing the advising, and so that was the first weapon, they were the first ones to actually employ that weapon in that type of environment.
Did they have a lot to do with the modifications of the AR today?
No, but, I mean, we've all read the book or seen the movie, We Were Soldiers Once.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And talking about Colonel Howard...
Yeah, right.
That guy.
Yeah, and they were the first ones to really, like, employ that weapon, like, that was like the first big battle we ever had, and so that unit, the after-action report of that, you can download it off of the interweb, and it'll, and it goes through a lot of the things that they said was, what was wrong with that weapon. And then people believed, believe it or not, that they thought it was an inaccurate weapon, because during the draft, what was happening is the soldiers weren't ready to be in that environment, let's just put it that way, so they would fire over the enemy's head, they would purpose, purpose...
Purposely miss.
Yeah, to, because they just weren't in that frame of mind, you know, it was during the draft, they didn't want to be there, that kind of thing, and so everybody talked about how inaccurate the weapon was. The weapon is incredibly accurate.
It's just the guy behind the wheel.
You know, there's an old saying, "It's not the dope on the rifle, it's the dope behind the rifle."
That's right, interesting.
Well, speaking of that, when Eileen and I went to Vietnam, we fired, captured American AR-16, or, yeah, M16s, and they fired great, and then they, I said, "Throw me a AK-47," and I pulled the trigger, click, I threw it back, and I was like, "Give me another one," click. Click, give me another one. So that stamped versus whatever, and after all those rounds, and thing was fifty something, both of them were fifty something years old. That M sixteen was shooting great.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the M sixteen verse, you know, there, there's this thing on the internet or whatever, the, the sub, uh, culture about ARs versus the AKs. And the AK, you know, like, oh, it's, it's more reliable. Well, it's, it's more reliable but less accurate. Uh, and the, the AR is incredibly reliable if you maintain it properly. It's just, it's made to Tyler tighter tolerances. I got my braces in, so my Invisaligns. So I've got my little lisp going on. So they're made to tighter tolerances.
That's why we call him Hollywood. He's straightening his teeth.
Hey, I gotta get pretty.
I took him to lunch and that guy starts ripping this stuff out of his mouth. Gagged me like a maggot. I couldn't believe what he was doing over there.
Right there at the table.
And then he paid for lunch because I was so ill.
Uh, there you go. So it all worked out.
Okay, there. So you could see clanking along over there.
Anyway, the, the AR, you know, uh, it's, it's a wonderful sporting rifle and that's how it was originally designed to begin with. It's a sporting rifle, something I didn't have to reload all the time, something I could take out and spend my time shooting versus, um, versus, you know, loading.
So you think the appearance has a lot to do with the negative?
Absolutely, absolutely it has a lot to do with the appearance. When they did the original band in whatever it was, ninety-nine or whatever it was, um, they went through, uh, like a guns and ammo magazine and like that is a dangerous weapon. That's when, when they, back when, remember when they picked them by name? Like, you know, the DP, the, the DPMS and the Colt Leo and all that? When they, when they chose them by name, this one's gonna be an assault rifle. This, they did it completely off aesthetics.
Strictly by the looks of it.
They had no idea. And even to this day, I mean, get on YouTube, you can look, they, and find all of these, uh, elected officials standing up there preaching to their other elected officials about these weapons that are this caliber, that shoot this many rounds, and they are totally, completely wrong. They have no idea what they're talking about.
Well, this is what I'm saying, they don't get it. They don't understand it.
Well, I, we, we've said here on the show a lot, the people who make gun laws know nothing about guns.
That's right. It's not just gun laws. Anybody lets somebody white line a motorcycle at fifty miles an hour is a minimum.
Well, that, that, well, we can get on, we can get on, we'll get on that subject in the next hour.
But that's still too fast. I don't care for people that.
I agree, I agree wholeheartedly, but there's no law for it.
No, but the government said, well, let's see, let's put a limit on how far, how about fifty? But anyway, well, that's another story.
But there's also a limit saying it's, they can do it up, up to fifty, but no more than ten miles above the regular traffic. So that's, that makes it different.
That's the caveat.
Right.
Yeah.
AR.
AR fifteen, sorry, yeah. So AR fifteen, for everybody out there listening, it stands for Armalite Rifle because it was designed by Eugene Stoner, a former Marine.
Sounds like a t-shirt.
Yeah, yeah. He worked for the Fairchild Aircraft Corporation in a subsidiary called Armalite Rifle Company.
Isn't that amazing? I'm telling you. Well, you know, like I said, we, everybody in this circle have been saying the same thing. Education, education, education. And I hate to say it, but it starts with the little ones.
It starts, it starts at home for sure. You know, I, I was raised, uh, you know, with, with weapons around and never once ever in my life have I ever thought of pointing a weapon at someone out of anger. I mean, I spent twenty-two years in the Marine Corps, so, I mean, it's.
Well, you got that out of your system.
That was, that was my job. And, but, you know, growing up as a, as a, as a child, teen, you know, adolescent teenager, uh, college years, I never, it never would have even crossed my mind to use a firearm in a violent manner.
Well, and to that point, that's, I think that's the whole point about all of us and that is we're nonviolent. They, the other side wants to paint us as the violent ones and we're not. We're the ones that just wanna stop the violence is all we wanna do.
Absolutely.
So.
Well, they're looking at, the other side looks at the gun as an easy answer to the problem.
Yeah.
And it's not.
No, it's not.
I mean, we had this conversation, you know, mental hospitals. When I was a kid in high school, there were, we had two of them in our, in our little town and it wasn't a big town. Because, you know, when people become ill, they need to be taken care of. I mean, if you fall off your bike and break your leg, they don't ignore you and take you to the hospital and fix it. So there's all, it's way more than just the gun.
Yeah, but that's, that's such a, a murky area to get into, you know, because you talk about fifty years ago when you were a kid.
You're absolutely right. Just before lighting.
Right, right, right before electricity hit. You know, they, they would put people in a mental institution for being homosexual.
Oh, I didn't say that it was a good system, I'm just saying.
So, I mean.
Okay, so we went from bad to really bad.
Well, before we just start putting down, here's the deal. There's no good arbitrary law when it comes to mental health. That's all it is to it. You can't make an arbitrary law. It has to come down to, um, you know.
Testing.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot more to it than that. And the same thing with, with firearms, there's no good arbitrary law because there's no good firearms law. Because it's protected under the constitution. My, you're right, shall not be infringed. I don't see how hard it is for anyone to understand that.
Well, but for some reason they have a problem with it.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And speaking of educating yourself about guns, firearms, a thing that the San Diego gun owners is tackling, and we could use a lot of public support on this, everyone out there listening here up, is the gun show in Del Mar.
Oh, yeah.
There is a move under front to get rid of it. Okay, more misconception and I'll let anyone jump in here.
Yeah.
Do you think that if you go to the gun show, they will sell you any gun and you can leave with it?
Well, let's hold that question because we're gonna take a quick break. And by the way, are you frustrated by the new California laws? All about ARs, looking for a low, a cost effective way to solve that problem? Calikey can easily convert your AR to be California compliant in just two minutes. Keep your entire collection intact at a price you can afford. Check out the new Calikey and future proof, your AR for future gun laws. Go to calikey.com. That's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y dot com. K-A-L-I-K-E, give me back my thing from my teeth. K-A-L-I-K-E-Y dot com. All right, we're gonna take a small break. The Answer, ninety-six one in North County, eleven seventy AM in San Diego. We are the answer. All right, folks, hey, welcome back, Gun Sports Radio. Right here on The Answer, FM ninety-six one in North County, AM eleven seventy in San Diego. We are the answer. Hey, do you, any of your, any of your family members, uh, keep a firearm or a weapon for personal protection? Do you have, or are you going to get a CCW? And if you're involved in an incident, what is your plan to pay for bail, expenses, lawyers and all that? Well, do like we did, ten dollars a month firearms legal protection. That way, any problems you get into with law enforcement, ICE, Border Patrol, makes no difference. All you have to do is let them know that firearms legal protection will be there to help you out. Firearmslegal.com, firearmslegal.com, eight four four three six seven ninety-four hundred. Make sure you check these guys out. And tell them the gang over at Gun Sports Radio sent you. All righty now, Charles is gonna talk.
We have Charles. Charles is a gun enthusiast.
And he's got the smallest little forty-five.
Well, you know, I was at his house the other day and he says, hey Lance, take a look at this thing. And it's really intriguing. So anyway, I appreciate Charles coming down to the show and, uh, bringing, so.
What do you got, Charles?
What do you, what do you got there?
It's called a downsizer. I've had it for about seventeen years. It was made in San T, it's about three inches long, single shot forty-five ACP. And it hurts when you pull the trigger.
I just tried pulling the trigger and I'm like, man, you gotta be a little bit of a gorilla. Well, you gotta be a little bit of a gorilla.
Yeah.
But anyways, it's, they're pretty unique and, um, made in beautiful San T, California.
Not anymore though.
When did they stop making those?
The, the factory was there at Prospect and Magnolia and a little, uh, industrial front building. And I think it's been gone for over ten years.
Gotcha.
If you don't mind me asking, what was the price tag on that?
It was only about two hundred dollars, but they're worth quite a bit more now.
Oh, because of a, because they were so limited production?
Yeah, collectible.
Well, I think also too, wasn't there some, another one of those crazy California gun laws that, that came around and said that they couldn't make them anymore or something like that?
Oh, I wouldn't doubt it.
So I think that was in it, you know, what was the end of it, but.
And it's heavy too.
Yeah, it's solid stainless. Offered it to a friend of mine that's a SWAT guy and told him that he was welcome to carry it if he wanted to. And he said he wasn't allowed.
Really? Cause it's too small?
It, it's not approved.
Oh, it's not approved. Well, don't most law enforcement have to buy their own weapons? But they just have to buy what's recommended?
I don't know. Like, I don't know if it depends on the agency or, or what it is.
Yeah, probably is how it is.
But, you know, that thing, that the trigger's so hard to pull on it.
Oh.
Um, I just throw it at somebody.
Oh, that would hurt.
Yeah, cause it's so heavy.
Wouldn't hurt as bad as if you could pull the trigger.
You know, that, okay, so it's just about the, the size of a deck of cards.
Yeah, well, what's the accuracy of that?
At what distance?
Three feet.
Twenty-five yards?
Oh, zip.
Zip, yeah.
So it's a close range, like a Derringer.
Yeah, but at five feet, it's devastating, I'm sure. It's a forty-five ACP.
Dude, that'll put a hole in you and, ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway.
Well, you're not gonna scare anybody if you pull it out and say, put your hands up. You have to wait till they finish laughing, then shoot them.
And then, um, so Christine was talking about, she, she's got a gun she just bought.
Yeah, what'd you get?
My, my new gun is a little Ruger LCR thirty-eight and it is lightweight. But you, is it you, that's a lighter weight one?
Point it at him.
Yeah, but you're more than a man than I am if you could shoot that thing cause it hurts my hand like crazy.
Your hand, mine doesn't, mine doesn't. It's really lightweight and it's really easy to use. It's a great, I would say it's a great starting gun for someone.
Wow.
Just for, just cause it's light and easy.
Do you have a CCW?
I don't and I've been thinking about getting one. I probably should, I've had guns for years and years. But now, for a while, you couldn't get one in San Diego County.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, I think you have good cause.
I think so, especially with the political climate.
Yeah.
The political climate and, um, you know, living by myself, um, and for a while, living by myself, raising a child, yeah, I think I had a good cause. And the political climate, I've had weird people make threats against me and do weird things.
Weird, yeah.
Send me newspaper clippings with like my head circled and weird, weirdos.
But you know, we can't, we can't take that jokingly cause you never, cause you just don't know what's out there nowadays.
You don't, you don't, and I am nervous. I, I, you know, I do get nervous because.
I would.
You know, most people know who I am and they know where I live cause, you know, my house has been on our La Mesa historic home tour and you, you do get nervous.
Right, yeah.
And yes, I'm gonna apply, go get my CCW.
Me as well.
Get in line.
Get in line, get in line and take care of it.
But you'll feel much better once you do that, I'm sure.
I, I will. And it's just been not wanting to wait and get in line and fill out the paperwork and then for a while being very worried that it just wouldn't be issued.
Well, but see the nice thing about San Diego County gun owners, they brought all this to the surface and basically caused, you know, Sheriff Gore to either get off the, you know what? But I think Dave Myers, who was running for sheriff, really shook the boat up a little bit because that's what he ran on.
It is what he ran on.
And I was so shocked that he didn't get it.
Oh, he, he faced a lot of opposition from within his own political party, you know, it's.
Oh, yeah, cause that, yeah, when we heard that he was a Democrat and he was running for concealed carry, it's like, wait a minute, that's like black and white.
And that's an unfortunate thing with politics. The reality is that people of all political parties, all stripes of life have guns.
Sure.
Lawfully, they don't do anything with them.
No.
And some of my best friends who have gun collections that are, would rival most anyone's, they're Democrats and they are for social issues and that's why. And people, someone asked me, you know, why aren't you afraid your pro-gun stance is gonna hurt you in an election? And I said, actually, I think it will help me.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, no.
So what got you into politics? Cause you didn't have to.
Um, just being, um, annoyed at what was going on around me with the first time, which was back in the late nineteen eighties on Alpine Community Planning Group. It was land use stuff. My background is real estate development, so. And then in La Mesa, I was a planning commissioner for ten years and there was a vacant seat and I wanted to give back to my community and I thought I had the qualifications with being, you know, so much of what La Mesa faces is land use decisions because we're a built out city. And I thought, you know, I've been involved, I've been on the Boys and Girls Club Board, the YMCA Board, I've done, worked, you know, with the pet therapy program with the city, been in the PTA, always involved in the community. And I thought, well, heck, I'll run for office.
See what happens.
See what happens. And I won and then I was reelected, the second highest, despite the fact that I have a gun and more, more than one gun, second highest total vote getter in La Mesa's history.
And how many cats do you have?
Ten.
There you go.
My weaknesses.
But you don't have a hairless cat. Do you have a hairless cat?